Good evening. I call the May 7, 2025, Apple Valley Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. We have no changes for you at this time.
Thank you. Any changes from the Commissioners?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Agenda approval was made by Commissioner Moholwild and seconded by Commissioner Halas. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion without discussion unless a commissioner or citizen requests to have any item separately considered. It will then be moved to the land use action items for consideration. Can I get a motion of approval?
So motion? Second.
I believe that was made by Commissioner Halas and seconded by Commissioner Pruitt. Oh, sorry, it was Commissioner Moholwild. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That brings us to number four, which is our public hearing tonight. And we only have one. And I will open the public hearing. We will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 4A. The affidavit of publication for the notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the Planning Department. Everyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster in the back. It includes your name and your address so that accurate records can be maintained. We will begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, city staff will be asked to comment on their proposals' conformance with pertinent regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public. And this is 4A, Sydney.
Thank you, Chair Kurtz, and Commissioners. Tonight, I will be presenting to you the request for a text amendment to Plan Development 975 regarding impervious surface requirements. Specifically, the request is to consider an ordinance amendment to PD 975 Zone 1 regarding impervious surface for lots 9,999 square feet or less in area. The zoning map shows PD 975 Zone 1 outlined in this red outline. So Zone 1 includes primarily single-family properties ranging in size from 20,000 square feet to 8,450 square feet. And then Zone 2 would be of the PD, would be these two large lots to the south, and those are just two stormwater ponds that serve the neighborhood. The applicants for tonight do live within Plan Development 975, and they have a lot that is just over 9,000 square feet. Plan Development 975 specifically calls out the maximum impervious surface requirements of 35% for all properties regardless of size. This is not typical for residential plan developments. Most residential PDs refer back to our standard impervious surface requirements that are set out in Section 155.350. The applicants are interested in installing an in-ground pool, but because of their smaller lot size and the PD requirements, they are fairly restricted with adding any impervious surface. So the request for tonight would be to add a footnote to the existing standards within the plan development, and the footnote would state essentially that lots that are under 10,000 square feet would be allowed an additional 10% from that 35% with the installation of a city-approved onsite stormwater management facility, which would be something like a rain garden or a French drain. We do have an existing application for this that other properties within our standard zoning requirements can apply for, and I'll go into that process in the next slide. So this wouldn't necessarily be something that hasn't been done before. It's relatively typical within our standard zoning. So the Section 155.350 sets out drainage requirements, which would include impervious surface maximums for standard zoning districts. The requirements apply to any residential plan development that does not specifically call out impervious surface requirements within the individual PD. Most residential plan developments refer back to this table. Additionally, there are properties within standard zoning that are allowed an additional 5% of impervious surface, again, if they install a city-approved stormwater management facility. So we have, we do this currently with lots, any size lot, if they want to increase 5%. We do allow that if they apply and show that they're installing some sort of onsite stormwater mitigation. So this would be done through the Natural Resources Department, and the applicants have initiated that process already with our Natural Resources Department. In doing research on Plan Development 975, there was no specific reason on record as to why impervious surface was specifically limited for this plan development. Staff is comfortable with amending the PD to allow for the same maximum that a lot in standard zoning would be allowed, which would be 45%, so long as the additional 10% is mitigated for with an approved stormwater mitigation facility. This would ensure that the additional drainage would not impact the stormwater ponds that serve this neighborhood of Plan Development 975. So lots that are less than 10,000 square feet that could apply to increase impervious surface are highlighted in red. It's about 77 properties out of, I believe, just over 160 for the total plan development. So any property that is highlighted in red, if they wanted to go anything above 35%, they would have to apply with the city in order to do so. And that would be how the ordinance is drafted tonight. So with that, staff is recommending to open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing. If there are no outstanding public hearing questions or comments, and the Planning Commission concurs, staff would recommend approval of the draft ordinance amending Article 34, Plan Development Number 975 of the City Code by amending impervious surface requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Sydney. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Sydney? Any questions?
Me.
Then I will let Eric and Amy come up.
Evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
I'm Eric Edstrom, and this is my wife, Amy. We appreciate you allowing us to be here tonight. Like we stated before, what we are proposing is just to allow similar lot sizes to ours in our plan development to have the same impervious surface allotment as other properties of similar size in the city of Apple Valley.
Okay.
We appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have questions for the Edstrums? I don't think so. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So that will bring us to the public hearing. If anybody would like to approach the podium, please do so. State your name and your address. No one? Just all here to support them?
I'm the neighborhood spokesman, I guess.
And you and your wife have been here before, right?
We have once upon a time.
I remember you. I won't remember any names, but I remember faces.
I'm Chris Molden at 6035-158th Court. My wife is Lauren. We are homeowners in Quarry Ponds, and when we built eight years ago, I guess it really wasn't explained to us that we were governed by different ordinances than the rest of Apple Valley. And I'm here, along with a lot of the neighborhood, to express support for Amy and Eric, and I guess I ask that you two support it and approve their request for the variance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you must be, have a good neighborhood if everybody's there to support you, so. Any questions for anybody here? Okay. I have a, let me close the hearing first. If there are no further comments, is there any other comments before I close it? Okay. I will close this public hearing. It is the policy of the Planning Commission not to act on an item on the same night as its public hearing. The Planning Commission will weigh all comments and information received tonight in its deliberations at future meetings. This item will continue to appear on future Planning Commission agendas until a recommendation on the petition can be forwarded to City Council, unless we decide to make a motion tonight. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the draft ordinance amending Article 34, Plan Development Number 975 of the City Code by amending the impervious surface requirements.
I'll second.
Okay, so that motion was made by Commissioner Pruitt and seconded by Commissioner Halas. Any concerns or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Your motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to number five, our land use and action items. That is also, Sydney.
Thank you, Chair Kurtz, again, and thank you, Commissioners. So for the next request, this would be text amendments relating to cannabis microbusinesses within the city. There was a public hearing for this item on April 2, and there were a couple, there were no public comments from the general public or residents, but there were a couple of questions from Commissioners, so those answers were included in the staff report, as well as will be gone over in the presentation. So specifically, the considerations would be an ordinance amendment to Plan Development Number 409 to allow for cannabis microbusiness. And then, secondly, an ordinance amendment to Section 155.320 relating to cannabis businesses, specifically zoning for cannabis, to allow cannabis microbusinesses and plan developments in general. The site that the applicant would like to operate a cannabis business is located at 6950 146th Street West. This is an existing multi-tenant strip off of Galaxy and 146th Street. The zoning for the existing property is within Plan Development 409 and is highlighted here on the map. PD 409 is highlighted in this hatched area on the app as well, so you can see it's, there's a section here to the south, and then it's split off by industrial zoning area, and then there's just a couple of parcels north of that that are also within Plan Development So the text amendments that would be, that are drafted by staff related to this request would be to allow cannabis microbusiness within PD 409 as a conditional use. Cannabis microbusinesses would still be regulated by Section 155.320 with the additional requirements, as stated on the slide, which would be that all cannabis microbusiness activities would occur indoors. No retail sales of cannabis products would be, shall be permitted except in conjunction with a cannabis microbusiness in operation onsite and with the retail operations endorsement from the state. An odor mitigation, an odor mitigation plan would need to be submitted and reviewed by city, by the city staff. Off-street loading areas would, in conjunction with a cannabis microbusiness, would be subject to our standard off-street loading requirements. And then, lastly, onsite retail operations in conjunction with cannabis microbusiness would be subject to the retail limitations that are set out within the plan development. For Section 155.320, this would also need to be amended because currently cannabis microbusinesses are only allowed in the BP, I-1, and I-2 zoning districts. Do you just want to note that per the city attorney's advisement, there, originally when you were shown this chart on April 2, there was a P with two asterisks. It's been changed to just two asterisks with the same provision that was seen on April 2, that cannabis microbusinesses may be allowed within a plan development district when specifically allowed as a permitted or conditional use under the zoning regulations of the specific plan development district. So what that would mean is that if this were to be approved, any other PD in the future would have to be, if requested, would have to be reviewed and also amended as this one is being requested. So if any other plan development were to come forward and, or any applicant were to come forward and want to amend another plan development, we would go through a similar process of you reviewing the request and trying to determine if that would be an allowable use within an individual PD. So this isn't necessarily opening the doors to allow cannabis microbusiness in any plan development without review. So considerations related to this request would be, does a cannabis microbusiness align with the intended purposes of the PD? So the intended purpose of Plan Development 409 is to provide for an integrated mix of limited industrial, general business, and retail businesses and limited business uses. PD 409 currently allows the following uses that are similar to the operations of a cannabis microbusiness. So that would be light fabrication, manufacturing, and assembly, including the fact that some or all goods produced are retail onsite. Research or testing of, research or testing laboratory conducted entirely within a building, and then retail sales and services, which would be subject to the floor area maximums that are set out in the PD. Additionally, do the drafted conditions that staff have drafted mitigate any potential adverse impacts of the cannabis microbusiness use within the PD? So regarding the questions that were asked from Commissioners the night of the public hearing, first would be the history of the PD. The ordinance creating PD 409 was adopted in 1988, and again, the purpose is to allow for an integrated new, integrated mix of industrial and business uses. The properties within PD 409 were originally zoned I-1 and I-2, and then rezoned to be, to PD, to allow for a wider range of permitted commercial uses than what was allowed under the previous industrial zoning. PD 409 is a hybrid of I-1, general business, and retail business zoning districts. The PD ordinance was drafted and adopted to limited retail, to limit retail and limited business uses to 35% of the total floor area of buildings within the PD, to ensure that the district did not lose the industrial character. Another question was related to existing uses and tenants within the multi-tenant building located at 6950 146th Street. So the applicant has provided a document that was provided to you in the staff report, which shows the current utilization and tenant mix of the multi-tenant building. There are 12 tenant spaces, two of which are vacant, and then the rest of the tenant spaces are filled with various businesses. Last public question was, has the applicant considered locations where cannabis microbusinesses are currently allowed in Apple Valley? So in staff's review of this question, cannabis microbusinesses are currently allowed in the Business Park I-1 and I-2 zoning districts. Based on the cannabis buffer map, it appears that there are currently 14 properties zoned for industrial use that do not have a buffer setback requirement. This does not mean that all 14 properties are available or for sale or leased. The applicant has stated that the locations that are available within the industrial zoning districts where cannabis microbusiness is allowed, of the ones that are available, they all have, are impacted by buffers. And the applicant's full response was provided in the staff report. So here's a cannabis buffer map. It's a little hard to see on the slides, from my view at least, but this light gray area are, is land that is guided for industrial, so that would mean land that is zoned BP, I-1, I-2, or PD. So this is the subject property where the applicant is looking to operate. As you can see, there, there are a handful of properties that are not impacted by buffers, but again, that doesn't mean that they are for sale or leased or are suitable for this type of use or development. So within the plan development, only one property is impacted by a buffer, so that would mean if this ordinance were to be passed, that only one property would not be allowed to operate a cannabis microbusiness, but the subject property that the applicant is interested in is not impacted by a buffer. So with that, the decision to add a use to a district is a policy-related decision. Staff is providing the following options in consideration of the requested amendments. So there'd be two sets of approvals related to the request if you were to recommend approval. And then, if the Planning Commission considers, after considering, decides that they would not like to recommend approval, then there would be two options related to recommending denial of the draft ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Sydney. Can I just go back to what you just said? Did you say there's only one location that's available that would be affected by a buffer? Is that what you said?
I'll go back to the map. Chair Kurtz, within the Plan Development 409, there's one property. So this property is within PD 409, and it is impacted by a buffer, but the rest of the properties that are within PD 409 would be allowed, a cannabis microbusiness.
Okay. Commissioners? Commissioner Halas.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Sydney, for the presentation. From what the map shows, we are outside the buffers for the preschools and the schools. And was there another item that was on the buffer list that we had to watch for? Was it other, other businesses of the same style?
Commissioner Halas? So yes, it's schools, parks, preschools, a residential treatment facility, and then if a cannabis microbusiness were to be approved to the state, approved through city zoning, and were to locate at this site, I believe we have enacted, I believe it's 1,000 feet from other cannabis microbusinesses themselves. So if there were a cannabis microbusiness approved and located here, then there would be a 1,000-foot buffer around that business itself where another cannabis microbusiness, or where another cannabis retail business could not go.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Moholwild?
Could you please go back to the slide? We're discussing Section 155.320, and I just, I was kind of intrigued by the discussion of the footnote there with the, the, allowing the business within a plan development district or zones therein, the parenthetical there. And I don't know if it makes some sense, at least for me, anyway. If you look at the Plan Development map, that top section, even though there's only one of two parcels that's affected by a buffer zone, it's right across the street from a residential area. There are, there is a, a nice buffer fence on the south, to the north of that parcel. But I guess, what, what street is that? Could it be 145th? Yeah, 145th. So there is a, kind of a nice boundary fence to the residential area on the north side of 145th Street West, but the, the thought that I had with, with regard to that parenthetical is, would it make sense to exclude that portion of Planned Development 409 from the amendment? So I'm kind of looking at the, the language or zones therein, and if, if this were something that the Commission were, and the Council were inclined to approve, that it just applied to the southern portion of PD 409? Does that make sense?
Commissioner Halas, if, if I can just say, for the amendment that has been drafted for 155.320, the or zones therein would be applicable to all PDs. So some PDs have multiple subzones, so that would mean that you could amend specific subzones within PDs, and I believe I'm interpreting that correct. City Attorney shaking her head, so I think that, that's correct. So that would mean if in another PD, say Cobblestone, Cobblestone has a number of subzones, if, for some reason Cobblestone were to come, someone were to request an amendment to the Plan Development for the Cobblestone neighborhood, you could specifically say that it can only be within this individual subzone of that PD. But for this Plan Development 409, there just happens to be one subzone only, but the language is drafted so that it is applicable to any PD that, if it were to come forward, it could apply to it, so that you could regulate it by even the subzone of a Plan Development District. And then, in terms of possibly limiting it to the, just the southern half of the Plan Development, so these buffers that are shown, so the PD includes these two properties, this buffer that touches this parcel, the draft ordinance for the Plan Development says that it is required, it refers back to the standard zoning requirements for cannabis, so that would mean that a cannabis microbusiness would not be allowed to operate here, whether you add that provision or not.
And then, and then that, I would assume that the smaller parcel just to the east of that, if, if this were to be approved, would be within 1,000 feet and also then excluded as a similar business buffer?
I did not do an exact measurement, but if it were within 1,000 feet, it would be excluded, if this cannabis microbusiness were permitted by the state and then approved to be here.
Staff?
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may just follow up with Commissioner's comment. Keep in mind that the buffers are a moving target, because the buffer showing for the daycare is that when this map was created, there is a daycare that exists within that area. Next week, that daycare may be gone, so that buffer's gone. I think the Blues Residential Treatment Center, same thing. So just by saying, well, it can't go up in that little, if you, if you amend the ordinance, it will apply to that northern piece regardless of the buffer, because the buffer may not apply a week from now, a year from now. And then the setback between uses too, this, if this is, ordinance is approved and the business comes in, they may not be here forever, and so the ordinance amendment will apply through the entire 409 district.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few things here. First of all, I want to know, has anybody in the area there been notified about the interest of the cannabis coming in?
Chair Kurtz, the, everyone within PD 409, every property owner within Plan Development 409 has been notified of this requested amendment.
And did you hear any feedback?
Staff has not received any feedback to date.
So my opinion is, you start opening up a can of worms, and you start opening it up for this, you're going to have other cannabis companies coming in wanting to do the same thing. I feel that meaning there are other opportunities to locate, adequate amount of them. I just don't feel that I would personally support the decision to make an amendment. I think we should keep the ordinance as it stands. And to me, this cannabis should be more, I know that you want to mix it up a little bit and everything, but the cannabis should be more in an industrial area. You know, I can just see numerous future disturbances and future complaints coming in about this, and I think it's just going to be hard to deal with. So I just, I'm referring that I would support just keeping the ordinance as it is. Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Halas?
Thank you. I just have a follow-up statement on, in regards to opening, I'll go off of what Jody just mentioned here, Commissioner just mentioned here. With the residential areas being so close and with the potential of daycares moving in and out and what we're doing here, we're going to run into some issues where we're going to be on that buffer. Should this be open in this area? Then if we got a daycare that does open, we're going to have, we're going to have an issue on this. It's, as was said, there's other opportunities in other retail and commercial areas and industrial areas that should be looked at, that would not put us into the situation where we're going to have a conflict on the buffer zone.
Thank you. Commissioner Moholwild?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would echo those comments, and in particular, I guess I'm, I'm more concerned about that, the northern piece of PD 409, which is, again, right across the street from the residential areas, which, as we now know, would, would still be included within the parcel, the two parcels at, at the north end there. end there would be included within this amendment. And because the subject parcel itself is, you know, if you go down that street, it is a largely industrial mix of uses there. And so is the current use, I guess the current use on that, the parcel off of 145th is, I think it's a precision auto care. I'm not sure what's, what's on the eastern. But I guess my concern is just the location in close proximity to the residential neighborhood that gets pulled into this because of its application to the entire PD 409.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Pruitt?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Kurtz. And Sidney, thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. My understanding was for the microbusinesses, there is an obligation to get a license through the state, and the site has a number of requirements, not just odor mitigation, ventilation, filtration systems, wastewater disposal, things like that. I anticipate, should this move forward, maybe you could speak a little bit to the consistency of the amendment with the requirements from the state for the site? And is there any correlation between the two?
Chair Kurtz, Commissioner Pruitt, so for requirements for the states, when the staff reviews the zoning compliance of a cannabis business, if that were to come forward, I don't believe we have any review of the state requirements. The state takes care of that. The applicant may be able to provide more information on what step they're in within the state licensing process and what requirements the state requires of them on that side. So I would maybe defer more state-specific questions to the applicant.
Any other questions for Sidney? Okay. Thank you, Sidney. With the applicant, Jason Sewell, I'd like to approach. Good evening.
Members of the commission, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, Sidney. It was amazing. I'm Jason Sewell. I reside at 15724 Cobblestone Lake Parkway in Apple Valley. I'm an advocate for cannabis, a military veteran, a medicinal cannabis patient, a retired engineer, and the founder of Hyrush, a Minnesota-based cannabis microbusiness. Spent a number of years in strategic planning, and I can appreciate your efforts and your diligence that is practiced in making the decisions that your position requires. Nine months ago, I've been looking for a suitable location for Hyrush. I did not set out to find a location that would require rezoning or the amending of an established ordinances. My intentions were to find a suitable location that would require minimal municipality involvement, a location with minimal challenges, and one that would help streamline my venture. In addition to the zoning challenges faced while hunting for an adequate location, cannabis-touching businesses are also faced with stigma from property owners. Further denials and rejections are also encountered through the property owner's chosen financial institutions and insurance companies. 6950 West 146th Street was initially identified and marketed as being in an industrial zone. After working with the ownership of Small Bay Properties, it was determined their business stack is open to shaking hands with the cannabis-touching business. It was not until I approached the city planning department that I was informed of the quasi-industrial zoning associated with PD 409. And it wasn't until after I verified that there are not any other suitable locations within the city that the decision to go after that property in question was made. It was after learning all this and consulting with Alex, the previous planner, as well as Sidney, that the option to approach the commission to request the rezoning of the property seemed feasible. I appreciate the consideration. I want to thank you for this opportunity and your time and attention to this matter. I'll go ahead and address any questions you guys may have now.
First of all, thank you for your service. Much appreciated. Did you want to reply to Commissioner Pruitt on what his question was?
I can respeak if you'd like. Yeah, I mean, there's a number of obligations or requirement of a site that's under 5,000 square feet, which is applicable to a micro cannabis business. And I guess my question is, whether it's the ventilation and filtration systems, wastewater systems that are obligated to be a part of that, have you confirmed that that site does comply with state requirements and possibly where you add in the licensing process and submittal of the license and the steps? You know, are you looking for this first, and then the state license application is next? Or is it vice versa?
Well, as it stands today, I'm, what do they call it? Prelimarily approved. So I'm on the road. I'm beyond the application process. The state has already considered my application, which includes my business plan, my operation plan. It addresses wastewater, it addresses electricity, it addresses all the standard operating procedures for any and everything that you can think of. It's a regulated business. It's more regulated than the pharmaceutical industry. That's not coming from me. That's coming from pharmaceutical reps that have transitioned from the pharmaceutical industry into the cannabis industry. So as it stands, I'm preliminarily approved for a license. My step, next step in the process, is procuring a location, getting that location adequately outfitted to meet not only the state requirements, but to fit in with the city ordinances and the permitting as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Mr. Sewell, could you explain to me the other locations? Why were they not suitable for you?
Sure. So in doing a search, like I said, I'd mentioned, I'd been doing this for about nine months. Initially, Apple Valley did not offer anything. After being rejected in some other surrounding municipalities, I did another search, basically looking for industrial slash commercialized properties available near me in Apple Valley. And lo and behold, that's when 6950 West 146th Street came up. I looked at it, I did not necessarily think that it fit my bill, which I, what I was looking for. It said it was marketed, it was marketed and advertised as being industrial slash retail slash manufacturing. I saw that it was, saw that it was zoned as that, and I thought, well, you know, that is a positive. So I approached the ownership, and I, you know, had to question who their, question to make sure that all of those pieces would line up as well, their financial backers, their insurance company, and the virtues of the ownership company as well, if they would be willing to be partners in a cannabis-type of a venture. And they, everything lined up, everything was great. And that's when I approached the city, thinking that, hey, this is, you can clearly see on the map here, it's an industrial zone. I thought, there's not going to be a whole lot of, you know, I didn't think we were going to have to go through this process. That's when I was informed by Alex, then later Sidney, that, well, no, this, it was, you know, in 1988, it would have, would have worked out just well, because it was primarily I-1 and I-2, but then it was later, you know, just transitioned and changed over into a different type of the PD 409, if you will.
Pardon me, but I don't feel like that's really answering my question. So my question is, all the other locations? So why were you turned down? Why was it not suitable?
So the only other locations that, you know, you go and you do a search on this, and Sidney had mentioned that there are 14 buildings in Apple Valley that would be suitable for a cannabis microbusiness?
Correct.
No, there are not 14 businesses that are available for rent.
Which you noted, correct.
Or for development. I found three locations that were available, that are zoned, and that would be feasible for a microbusiness, let's say. One location was 6275 147th Street. That is, just kind of north of English, I think, maybe just east of English Way, if you will, there's a little stack warehouse development over there, about eight warehouses all lined up. They all sit inside of a buffer zone. The one that is available in that area, 6275 147th, I do have some information as far as why that wouldn't be available. That offers 32,000 square feet, up to 78,000 square feet of space. Microbusiness, the license is 5,000 square feet, and by definition of a microbusiness, I'm not going to have more than 10 employees. So 32,000 square feet is out of the realm of possibility, really, for any microbusiness. Second location was 6175 147th Street, and that only offers 1,400 square feet. So we go from one extreme to another. The 1,400 square feet is just not sufficient. Third location is 14720 Energy Way, and that offers 56,000 square feet. Again, a little bit too much for a microbusiness. And all three of those locations that I mentioned are also touching a buffer zone, be it a park buffer zone or a school buffer zone. There is not a location anywhere today in Apple Valley where a microbusiness could move into and start operation.
So even with the large square footage, I mean, we can always talk to the leasing manager and see if that can be multi-shared with other tenants and stuff like that, too. But you're saying there was a buffer in those areas as well?
In the three locations that I mentioned, yes. And of the ones, as an example, that offer 32,000 square feet up to 78,000 square feet, the 32,000 square feet is already the subdivided square feet that they would be willing to allow for any business to come in there to subdivide their building up. No, to answer your question, I did not approach them and ask, would you be willing to subdivide that further? I did not do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for him? Okay. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Okay, team, so that brings us to, this is not a public hearing, correct? No. But if you'd wish to make a comment, I will allow it. Sure. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
I apologize. I looked online, and I thought it was a public comment, so I apologize. My name is Hillary Swanson. I live at 15565 Finch Avenue.
Yep.
And so I, I thought there was, and I called someone, too, to say that I was coming.
Okay. Maybe misunderstood, maybe thinking that was for the other public hearing that we just closed. But that's okay. State your, state.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I have a statement. It's about 4 minutes and 14 seconds.
Okay.
My name is Hillary Swanson. My husband and I have owned a home here for six years. I want to take a moment and thank the applicant for his service to our country. He is a veteran. It's not lost on me that I'm able to do what I'm doing tonight, in part because of the brave, because of brave men and women like him. Our society owes him a debt. Thank you, sir. I do not think the proposed amendments to Planned Development 409 and Section 155.320 should be allowed, and I'd like to offer my reasons in opposition. Our community has not been sufficiently notified of the eight, of the proposed changes. I went to 6950 Building, the building, to interview the eight current tenants. Of the five, of the five I made contact with in one day, I was able to gather comments from four. The last one at the time of this meeting has not yet returned my call. Only one of the tenants was aware of the proposed retail store, and two of the four I interviewed were not in favor of such a store. I can only assume that the building owner had been notified, but chose not to or forgot to notify their tenants. There appears to be a lack of notification to the general public. I'm a member of the Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce on Facebook and the Citizens of Apple Valley Facebook page as well. I do not see any information regarding this proposal, and these pages, these pages are known to share information with the community. I didn't receive a letter, nor have a couple neighbors I've checked with, which is probably why there may have been not much public comment or comment from the owners on April 2nd. As a community, we should be able to weigh in on things like this, which is why I'm here, but it's just me. I believe that if more people knew about this, there may be more people here tonight. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the city council according to the goals and objectives for the comprehensive plan and requirements of the zoning subdivision and sign ordinances. Since you make recommendations to the city council, then you fall under the mission of Apple Valley, and you are pledged to promote and enhance the health and safety and general well-being of Apple Valley citizens and all who visit the city. The Planning Commission recommending a cannabis store would not enhance the health, safety, and general well-being of Apple Valley citizens. I pulled an article from the New England Journal of Medicine from 2015, and they state, and I quote, "Recreational use of marijuana has been associated with a multi-state outbreak of salmonosis, illustrating the potential for widespread exposure through either inadvertent contamination during growing and storage, or purposeful adulteration. More worrisome are the risks of marijuana use for medical purposes, particularly by the population of the immunocompromised patients. Prior reports have documented that frequent contamination of marijuana with fungal organisms and the potential for severe complications, including death, are evident. These risks are not well-studied and thus poorly defined. To date, 23 states allow the medical use of marijuana. However, dispensaries are currently not subject to regulation or quality control. We believe that the infectious risks need to be better defined, which will allow for appropriate regulatory oversight. The current approach places patients unknowingly at undue risk for acquisition of severe and often lethal infections." The proposed site for Hyrush is about, it's not that far from Eastview High School, and it's not that far from Apple Valley High School. And there are two elementary schools that are well within the vicinity, in my opinion. I think we should be careful with what we allow in our community. What would enhance the health, safety, and general well-being of our citizens, especially children, would be safe places for music, and the arts, and games, and sports, and places of belonging, especially for teens. More of those spaces would be better. I want to say in no way do I want to attack the applicant personally, and I hope it hasn't been perceived that way. I understand the idea of opening your own business and the desire to do this that can be seen as beneficial to the owner and the community. But what is sold is just as important as pursuing the American dream. And if I could just say one more thing, I had a wonderful conversation with the couple of the tenants. One of the tenants wouldn't allow me to use their name or even the business name, but they were actually in favor of Mr. Sewell. They stated basically that, what business was it of theirs? However, two other tenants, one in the building, said that he didn't approve of Mr. Sewell's idea, and it was because of what may be attracted to our city because of it, what dangers would be associated with, with making or growing this, this product, and how that may negatively impact the city, and the proximity of the schools that we have in this particular, where the building 6950 is. Across the street is Dakota Auto, and I could use his name, his name is Derek. He owns Dakota Auto, and he's across the street. And he was not in favor of the microbusiness. And he said because of, again, what kind of people may be attracted, and also what kinds of dangers there may be within that kind of business. He also said that he didn't own the building, Dakota Auto, Derek, he doesn't own it, but his parents do. And they would have told him had they received some sort of notification. They live in Alexandria, Minnesota. But he said that his parents did not tell him that they received any kind of notification about the possibility of a microbusiness, a cannabis microbusiness. So in conclusion, I'll say that I don't think that many people know, and that's a concern of mine. I think the community needs to know so they can have a chance to comment on their own and do the research that I happen to do as well. Again, no, to lose, to use a familiar colloquial term, no shade to Mr. Sewell. I just don't think that's appropriate for this community. Thank you for your.
Your name was Hillary?
Hillary Swanson.
Thank you for your hard work. You can tell that you worked hard at this. You know, the state mandates that we have five, five cannabis in our city. So it isn't that we are against the cannabis because the state mandates it. My biggest issue is just where it's going to, to be located. So you'll probably be seeing other cannabis's coming into the city. Like I said, it's all about the location. Thank you. Do I hear any questions or concerns anymore for Sidney, or does anybody want to make a motion? a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion, and I recommend denial of the draft ordinance, amending Article 16, Planned Development, Number 409 of the City Code by allowing cannabis microbusiness as a conditional use with the conditions as drafted. And, I don't know, do we need number two on that also?
Correct. No, one at a time.
Okay.
Do I hear that? Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that? You? So, the motion was to not be amended by Commissioner Halas, and seconded by Commissioner Mahalawat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Let me recommend that denial of the draft ordinance, amending Section 155.320(c) regarding cannabis microbusiness in planned development district. Second.
This was made by Commissioner Halas, seconded by Commissioner Mahalawat. Any questions or concerns? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. So, this brings us to number six, other business, and that is Mr. Tim Bonetti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. Just want to remind you, our next meeting is May 21st. We might not have a meeting that night, so you might have just this one meeting today, so we'll provide you some more information later, also followed by June 4th. We have our next council meeting tomorrow night, Thursday, and also on Thursday, May 22nd. It gives me great pleasure to announce or introduce to you our newest city planner, her name is Terry Dill. Come on up, Terry. Terry comes from, by way of Scott County, where she was a transportation planner for about two years. Prior to that, she was with the city of Savage for, I think, 78 years as their senior planner or city planner. Now, just about 20 some-plus years, right?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years. Before that, she was a city Jordan, so she's got a great, wonderful resume of experience, exactly what we're looking for, and I'm just going to have her, I know she met a few of you, so two of you still have to shake her hand at the end of the meeting, please, so she's going to be, she's digging in there already, she's been here a week and one day.
Yes.
And she hasn't quit on me yet, so I'm going to take that as a win, so.
No, it's been a great first week, so I'm very excited to be here and be part of the team.
Welcome.
Welcome, Terry.
Appreciate that.
You saved the best city for last, maybe?
I hope so. I hope it's for last, yes.
Welcome to Apple Valley, we're excited to have you.
Yes, thank you so much.
We are too.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to closing. Anybody give the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner Mahalawat to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Halas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. This meeting has adjourned.